Good evening and welcome to the special meeting, Thursday, May 31st, 2018, zoning board of appeals. All five members, four members are present. We're waiting for Mr. Whitkis, but we're gonna start without him, okay? There's only one on the agenda tonight, and that is a discussion of anything and everything pertaining to 92 North Main Street, including the proposed changes, okay? Just to get everybody up to date, alright? We received a letter from Mr. Ali's attorney, Mr. Havity, who happens to be here tonight, and basically talking about Building C and the changes. The building permit plans approved for Building, for Building C contains 14 one-bedroom units, nine of which also contain a den. And just to clarify that, I've been on this board for the whole time that this project has been going on, and I never once heard anything about any dens in one-bedroom units in Building C. So, I'm just kinda confused with that. So, Mr. Havity's here, Mr. Ali's here. Let's go with it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, Paul Havity, Blatman, Bobrovsky, and Havity representing the applicant, Mr. Ali. What we have here tonight is a request for a modification of the previously issued comprehensive permit pursuant to 760 CMR 56.0511, which allows an applicant to come in front of a board and request changes to a comprehensive permit. And as an initial threshold matter, the board is required to make a determination as to whether the requested modification is either substantial or insubstantial. If this board determines that the requested modification is substantial, it's just simply automatically approved, there's no need for a public hearing, and everyone goes on their merry way. If the board makes a determination that it is substantial, then it notices a formal public hearing and reviews the requested modification, and basically it's treated as though it were a new application in terms of the process. You would go through-
You still need me? I'm an embarrassment to myself. Alright, Charlie, alright. That's all that matters. I'm sorry, Mr. Havity, continue, sir.
So, if there is a determination that the proposed modification is substantial, then you would go through with the hearing process, although the applicant does have the right to actually take an immediate appeal of that determination to the Housing Appeals Committee, or it also has the right to hold off on challenging the determination of substantial or insubstantial and waiting until after the hearing process is completed. One thing that I should note is that the regulations actually cross-reference a different section of the regulations, which is 760 CMR 56.074. And within that provision of the regulations, it actually gives a list of certain things that are normally considered to be substantial changes and things that are normally considered to be insubstantial changes. And what is listed within things that are normally considered to be insubstantial changes is a change in the number of bedrooms of less than 10%. Because the total number of bedrooms that was originally approved for this project was 154, that means that an increase or decrease in the number of bedrooms of 15 or less should be considered to be an insubstantial change. So that's what we're asking for this board to make as a determination. And then there are a couple of other smaller items, I think, for this board's review. Things that were incorporated into the final plans of the design. I think maybe it's helpful to step back a little bit and give a little bit of a fresh course on how Chapter 40B works, which is when an application is filing, an applicant is filing an application for a comprehensive permit, they're required to submit preliminary plans. They don't submit final design plans, they're not really up to that stage of design and information. Once the project has been approved, then the applicant is required to come in with their final plans, have them approved, and get their building permits. So occasionally, as additional information is being prepared and accrued, there are some small changes to what was presented and what winds up on the final plans. Sometimes boards and towns leave it to the discretion of a building inspector, reviewing those plans, as determine whether or not they think they're significant enough that the Board of Appeals should take a look at them, or whether they feel like it's acceptable for them to say, "No, this is really just the sort of additional information one would expect when you're moving from preliminary plans to final plans with all construction-level detail." So in this instance, there was some additional details, information that was added that included a yoga room in a fitness center as amenities in Building A. Then also a dog park and a gazebo on the outside on the site plan, which-
And a clubhouse.
Excuse me?
And a clubhouse.
And a clubhouse, which are shown on a landscape plan dated May 15th, 2018. So again, it's certainly easily arguable that these don't even need any approval by the board, that this is the sort of additional information filling out the details in a final submittal, and they were approved by the building inspector. But since we were coming back here anyway to discuss the issue with regards to the bedrooms, we figured it was better to bring it all in front of the board, have you take a look at it, and have everything included in one determination.
Counselor. So, at this time, you know, you are requesting nine two-bedrooms to be converted to one-bedroom?
We're requesting nine one-bedrooms to become two-bedroom units.
Nine one-bedrooms to be two bedrooms?
Correct. So, as the final plans were being developed, it turned out that there was more space that was usable within the units, so there was an inclusion of this one-bedroom with a den for nine of the units. That has raised some concerns as to whether or not they could, that den could be considered to be a second bedroom. It's something that is not unusual to come up, although it's typical, a question of whether or not a bedroom, whether it's a bedroom or a den or something along those lines, when you're talking about something that's limited because of septic. In this instance, this is on public sewer, so it's really not as significant of an issue. We're not running into something where we're exceeding the capacity of the septic system that's on the site. But rather than have that, any confusion with regard to it, we're just requesting that this board accept that these would be two-bedroom units, even if they wind up not being used as such.
Agree. What are the total, as of the comprehensive permit? Approved one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, and three-bedrooms, in total?
In comprehensive permit, total, I think we have, total, how many we have?
Yeah.
One bedrooms? 14 one-bedrooms, in which we have five one-bedrooms-
There were 14 one-bedrooms in Building C.
That's all, that's where we have.
Those are the only ones-
Those are the only ones in Building C.
Total, how many total, two bedrooms?
Total, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms are 12.
12 or 8?
12. 8, 8 are marked-
I'm asking the total units. The reason why I'm asking is, you know, yeah, let's-
Total 10%, 10%, 8 units are three bedrooms.
I'm talking about the total. Number of units approved.
Number of units approved, eight, three bedrooms, and 14 one-bedrooms, that's 22. Take out 80, it will be 58 two-bedrooms.
So that's, that's what the math I have.
Yeah.
Okay. So, in this, so you are, you are asking now to convert
nine one-bedroom dens, dens, we are calling it as dens, but there was a confusion, we can, if the board is okay with the name den, I don't have a problem. Den are two bedrooms. I don't want any confusion from, this is the final meeting we have, so that we have everything included. What are the maximum then?
I just want to understand myself, you know, for, understand myself, as well as for the public.
You understand, I do understand.
Yeah.
But my question is, there are five one-bedrooms and nine one-bedroom dens. You can designate dens as dens also, I don't have a problem, or bedrooms also?
Yeah, I'm getting to that. So, that leaves, if the board approves, nine one-bedroom apartments to be converted to two-bedroom apartments, that leaves only five one-bedroom apartments over there. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. So in these five one-bedroom apartment, is there any 40B units?
Yes, four of them.
So that leaves only one bedroom apart, only one bedroom apartment is for regular rental.
Yeah.
And is there a reason why, but the board approves one-bedroom apartment, is there a reason why you build in with a den?
The reason was, there were big lobbies. What happened was, this project was designed for four levels. Building C, only Building C has the problem, that's where we changed a lot of things in Building C. We took one floor out, we took the elevator out, but the footprint never changed. What happened was, when the designer started doing it, he left big lobbies in the hallway. And everything, everything was in the hallway, there was no need for wasted space, and the stairs got moved because it was not three floors, it was not four floors, it was just three floors. So we moved the stairs to the corner so that it can, the stairs were in the middle. It got moved into the corner, so that space also got emptied. That's how those nine units got changed.
So essentially, there were inefficiencies as was designed in the preliminary plan-
Because the board asked me for a plan.
You didn't notice this prior, when the plans were made out? Right, so initially, the plans were made out, but they were incorrect?
But, well, they were preliminary, so you didn't really have the level of detail that you would have when you're preparing your final architectural plans. So when they went back to do those final plans, that was when it was identified, you know, that you have this efficiency, therefore, they changed the plans, submitted them for the building permit, and now we're at the point where we just wanna make sure that they're confirmed with regards to what's been done.
Towards that question and a follow-up question, there are another five units are left. Are those units as a den or no?
No. There's only, it's only the nine units that were increased in the size and the inclusion of the den.
This had three levels of, two levels of this thing, there was an elevator here. Whenever we were going for approval, we just made it a storage. But what happened was, because we had 100, 299 feet by 70, 36 feet long storage in the basement, which we are using it as storage in the backside, because nothing, knowing there's nothing there in the basement, those are all storage areas in the basement. So we took all the storages out, and we looked at the same thing on this side. This extra area, this stairway was moved to the, this one, because we changed the, from four buildings to two, four stories to three stories. Then we didn't need the stair here, we needed a stair over here. So we moved this thing, that's what happened here. So it affected three stories on both sides.
So, let me understand this, okay? The plans were approved, this plan was originally approved by the, by the building department. This was the plan that we were gonna work off of, okay? As the construction went along, they realized that there, some things needed to be changed, okay? So, correct me if I'm wrong, but in construction, when a plan is approved, that's basically the plan that we use. Okay, I understand that, you know, there's gonna be some changes, okay? But what I don't understand is, is when these changes are made, why isn't there a, a change made, you know, a change made so that it's brought to the attention of the board, the building inspector, you know? To show, okay, look, this is what was approved, okay? But now you're changing this, you're gonna change this here, you're gonna move the stairwell, because now it's not gonna be four stories, it's only gonna be three, okay? That's fine, but I think that there should have been, you know, a process where Mr. Ali should have came to the board and to the building department and said, "Okay, look, since we're not gonna do four floors, this is what needs to be done, we need to do a modification, okay?" Anytime, at least from what I understand, anytime you do any kind of a change to an approved plan, there should be a modification, you know? There should be an additional sheet put in there and say, "Okay, we modified, okay?" This is not, this is really not sitting well with me. I'm gonna let Mr. Rice talk, okay?
Yeah, I just, to add on to Dave, you know? So you have been before the board at least a dozen times after the comprehensive permit?
No, 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 every meeting I was here.
Yeah, but you never ever brought this kind of issue-
It was an insubstantial change, that's why I didn't bring it.
So the-
Right now, I'm telling you-
What I'm trying to say is, one-bedroom with a den, this issue never brought before the board. You have been before the board while, during the construction, even several stages of the construction, but as Dave said, you have never mentioned to us.
Did I tell you that I never mentioned, I'm telling you that?
Now, it's everything is done, now you wanted to convert to the one-bed, one-bedroom apartment with a den. You wanted to convert it to two-bedroom apartment.
I don't want, I'm telling you.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may address that. Construction pursuant to Chapter 40B is a different animal than your typical construction process because of the whole preliminary plan to final plan process. So it's not unusual that changes like this would occur during construction with the acceptance of the building inspector, rather than coming back to the board. But I completely agree with your position that the better approach was to come here, which is why I advise my client to do exactly what we have done, which is file the formal request for the modification. I do think it's cleaner, it has, it leaves everybody in a position where they know exactly what's going on, and that's why we are here tonight.
Okay, I've had two major issues with this project. This is gonna be the third one. The first issue was, we were gonna use natural gas, okay? That was changed, because it was gonna, it was a cost effect, fine. Mr. Ali went and did electric heat pumps, didn't tell anybody that he was doing it. If it wasn't for one of the board members happened to drive by and see these heat pumps, you know, and mention it to the board, then we approached the subject by it. I had VHB, I called them, I said, "Go out and look at these." All, myself and the gentleman from VHB and Mr. Ali walked around. We determined, they're ugly, they're on the decks, okay, of each unit. People cannot use those decks when that heat pump is on, okay? I understand, you know, that there was a change, but that's something that I think that should have came to the board. He changed from one type of heating to another type of heating, okay? And he put it, there seems to be that they could have been done a little bit better as far as where those units were put, okay? They built in 16 units across, right next door to me, they have heat pumps. They put them on the side of the building of each unit, of each unit. It looks nice, because it's, it's got a little covering over it, that looks appropriate. These do not look appropriate. That was the first issue. The second issue is, the building inspector went out there, and all of a sudden, he looks, and he sees, goes down by Building A, looks in the back, there's solar panels going up. What is, what is with this? No building permit was issued for the solar panels, it's not on any plan, original plan or any plan, it was never discussed, okay? I understand, we brought, Mr. Ali came in, he said, "Yes, I was wrong, I should have gotten, you know, done this." He didn't get a building permit, he didn't even have an electrical inspection. Finally, he went to the building inspector and got all of that. The thing is, is that, you know, I'll give him this much credit. I've been to the units, they're beautiful, okay? They came out excellent. I have no quims quals or any complaints about the interior of them. My complaint is, fact is, is that 40B, I understand it's a separate animal from everything else.
And it's a different type of oversight, and I understand your frustration.
But still, when there's any type of a change, okay? Regardless of whether it's substantial or not, or insubstantial, I think that the board should be notified, and the building inspector should be notified, so that we know that these changes are being made, you know? This is just so darn frustrating, you know? I can't speak for anybody else in the board.
So, with regard to the solar panel, have you ever talked to our electric departments, what do they say? What's their recommendations?
They don't have any recommendations.
They don't, yeah, but basically, you know, you don't need any recommendations from anyone?
No, I talked to them, I told them I'm doing it. Municipal, they have a policy till 2019, they cannot put a reverse meter on it. Afterwards, they are going to do a reverse metering in 2020 sometime. But basically, it's generating like 9,000 watts, which usually it will run my clubhouse and my gym. That's the reason I put it in. I had told this thing to the board already about that thing. As per the difference of the electrical heating system, it was applied for the permit, as a electrical permit, and we, I was here and I had told that we are using electric, because propane was going too expensive.
But you told the board this after the heat pumps were already put in, that's my complaint.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I would say generally, changing the type of heating on a, on a project is not something that would come back in front of a board. I understand in this instance, if you're suggesting that it's impacting the use of the decks, that it's something you would have wanted to see, but I, I think generally, I can't think of any of my clients that would think to come back to a board on something of that nature, because it's usually not something that a board is concerned about. I think that part of the issue here, again, is it's a different nature of oversight with Chapter 40B than it is when you're doing a conventional construction project, when you, you don't consider.
In that situation, then if 40B is such a, a different animal, then why even bother coming? Just build it, once it's all done-
I think you're misunderstanding my point, Mr. Chairman.
Then submit the plan to the board and say, "This is what I built, because it's a 40B project, you have nothing to say about it." This is it.
I think you're misunderstanding my point. What I'm actually suggesting is that there is more oversight under Chapter 40B, which is why we, why we are in fact back in front of you tonight. Generally, a developer who is doing a construction project, if you're doing a subdivision, right? You would not normally have to go back in front of the planning board to discuss what type of heat you're using in a, in a building. So it's, it's a, there's a little more oversight in this type of project, but sometimes developers just aren't as used to doing this type of development and don't recognize that they should have come back to you. So I completely understand your frustration with regards to how this is moved forward, but again, we are here in front of you tonight. I am now involved, Mr. Chairman, you're aware of my involvement with Chapter 40B and my understanding of how these projects work. So I'm, I'm telling you, we will give you any notice that's required when we're doing anything that's different than what's been approved.
And the footprint of the Building C, though the unit configuration changed because of the dens, the footprint of the building has not changed. It's the same footprint.
Footprint is the same, but you did alter all the, you know, if the board approves, this combination of one, two, and the three bedrooms will be entirely different than whatever the board approved in the comprehensive permit.
And that is correct, but the regulations specifically state, if you don't change it by more than 10%, it is insubstantial.
Yep.
And that's the determination that we're looking for the board to make tonight.
And-
And I don't believe that there are really any impacts that are associated with the, the change in the number of bedrooms. I mean, the first thing that would come to mind is if you're dealing with a site that has, you know, something that was already an insufficient amount of onsite parking, then you might say, "Well, there'd be more cars associated," which would then lead to a greater need for parking, and that might be an issue that could overcome the presumption that it is insubstantial. But in this instance, my understanding is we have a significant amount of excess parking, and that is not gonna be an impact associated with that.
The parking wise, you know, the parking, if I remember correctly, the parkings approved for how many bedrooms?
Usually, one and a half per unit they give it. Usually, when we calculate, this was, this parking lot was designed for 96 units.
They give you one and a half per unit?
But this, this project was designed for 96 minutes. We have like 172 plus some extra handicap park and something like that.
Is about 120 parking spaces?
172.
172, okay. Out of those nine-
Will this enough, if this becomes a two-bedroom?
Yeah, it's more than enough.
More than enough. Out of those nine, out of the nine one-bedrooms that you're converting to two bedrooms, how many of them are affordable?
Nothing.
No, then what we'll do is we'll change the-
Just answer my question.
Are any of the-
No, no.
None of them, none of these nine bedrooms? And how many one-bedrooms were approved for?
Four.
Four? Four? But all the one bedrooms are in Building C?
Yeah.
So that leaves, you know, only one, one bedroom in the complex.
What we did, market rate.
Market rate, only one bedroom.
And all three bedrooms are in Building A?
So now with this, now with this change, you're gonna have five one bedrooms, sixty-seven two bedrooms, and eight three bedrooms. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
Because according to my calculation, that makes eight.
Let me...
So in accordance with seventy-six, seventy-six DCMR, as far as the 40B project is concerned, as long as the number of, the number of bedrooms that are approved, or the number of units, eighty units that are approved, okay?
The total number of bedrooms.
Total number of bedrooms that are approved, which is...
Twenty-six times two.
No, hundred and something?
Eighty.
Eighty.
No, not bedrooms.
So, so what the regulation states, Mr. Chairman, is that it will be an insubstantial change if it's a, a change in the number of bedrooms within individual units, if such change do not affect the overall bedroom count of the proposed housing by more than 10%. So that's overall for the entire project.
And those five one bedrooms, none of them are gonna have a den? It's just gonna be a straight one bedroom?
Correct. I mean, if they had been designed with a den and constructed as such, we would still fit under the 10%, so we'd be asking for just fourteen two bedrooms, but they're not, they are one bedroom units.
Now... Okay, so you have a total of a hundred and sixty-three bedrooms in that building, in the whole complex. Does that sound right?
We've added nine to...
Did I add, did I do the wrong...
Yep, we've added nine to a hundred and fifty-four, that's a hundred and sixty-three.
A hundred and sixty-three. So in order for this to be a substantial change, it would've had to been at least sixteen or seventeen units, or sixteen or seventeen bedrooms.
That would not necessarily have meant that it was a substantial change, it would just no longer have the presumption that it is insubstantial.
All right. Mr. Olson, been awful quiet.
All right, so we did get confirmation that these nine units that we're talking about, they are all market rate.
Yes.
I think you mentioned that earlier.
So, my client did mention that. One thing that I will say is that ultimately, the distribution of affordable and market rate units is within the exclusive jurisdiction of the subsidizing agency, which in this instance is Mass Housing Partnership. So this will have to pass muster with them. And if they think that there needs to be more affordable two bedroom units, then they will let us know that.
So regardless of whether we approve this, Mass Housing Partnership has to approve this too?
Yes.
Well, Mass Housing Partnership, in any 40B application, you have to go back to the subsidizing agency for final approval before you can even commence construction. In this instance, because it's a change, we do have to submit it, and we have in fact already submitted a copy of what we have submitted to you to MHP for their review as well. So yes, they will look at this, and if they find that the distribution is unacceptable to them, they'll let us know, all right? You have to, you have more two bedroom affordable units, and you're gonna have to have a couple more market rate one bedroom units.
So is that the standard policy on the 40B, is that...
Every 40B.
I understand that they, you have to go to MHP, but why, why are they the last resort? Why wouldn't, why wouldn't they have to, I mean, because, like, if we approve it and then they disapprove it, I mean...
Right, it's...
I think that it would be the other way around.
But understa- understand that, that MHP or whatever the subsidizing agency is, is not going to really look into issues that are strictly within the board's purview. When they do their final review, they're looking for their programmatic issues that are within their purview, which is affordability, profit limitations, things of that nature. That, that is exclusively within the subsidizing agency's jurisdiction. So the way the process works is you go to them first, you get an eligibility letter, once you get that, you get to go to the Board of Appeals, file your comprehensive permit, but once you've gotten your comprehensive permit, you have to go back and get a final approval from the subsidizing agency.
All right, I'm sorry, Mr....
No, no.
Anything else?
The signs in the road, we do have the sign by law. Is that, comes, there are many complaints, the sign is too bright.
Have you had, have you had anybody, electrician go out there with a light meter?
I can get you the lumens.
Huh?
I can get you what lumens it's throwing. I think it's pretty dark though. I looked at it a couple of times. Last time when I heard somebody talk about it, it's not that bright, but you can reduce the lumens on it. But it's, obviously, it has to be a little brighter because you miss, people who are coming from 140, they miss that road all the time.
Yeah, but you don't want to blind the people too, right?
It's...
That sign is blinding.
That was done by a professional sign people. They must have checked all the lumens, I had given all the data to the building inspector. We pulled a building permit on it with the light and everything, he has all the paperwork with it. I think it should be done, but if you were, if you want me to recheck it, I can recheck it, but it has to be within the limits.
Mr. Chairman, are there any other outstanding issues that the board has concerns about that we can sort of bring to the forefront tonight?
The sign is not authorized in a single residency, but my opinion is, is that, you know, I understand that. The thing is, is that the sign is smaller than what was approved on the plan, okay? There are other, I guess, businesses, there's a church, there's the Olddale Rehabilitation, they all have signs.
Are they illuminated?
No, they're not illuminated. I'm talking about people saying that the sign is not even authorized in a single residence, but, you know, it's...
Yeah, so if the plans show it...
What a lot of people don't understand, and I know you understand, but what a lot of people don't understand is, is that when a 40B project comes into town, the ZBA is basically, not just the ZBA, but there are also the acting planning board, because they're the ones that are gonna make all the issues and, and everything. Because Mr. Ali came to us and separated, because that was all one property at one time, and he separated the house and the property that, that the, the 40B project is on. Now, we signed an A and R. I'll be honest with you, I didn't think that the ZBA could even do that, because that's definitely a planning board type issue. Until I met with some people, I asked numerous questions, if you'd have been there, I'd asked you the same question, but I did ask other people that are very involved in 40B, and they said that, yes, the ZBA, only in the instance of a 40B project can they approve an A and R. I said, "Okay, fine." That, that's, one thing load off my mind, okay? So, but, you know, we approved the sign, it's in, it was in the, was in the plans.
I totally agree with that, but our zoning by law, five point... Six. Signs and billboards...
A nine.
Under, uh... Nine, under chapter eliminations, signs eliminated from an external source directed solely, solely towards the sign. The, the, that's irrelevant, so, the D, nine D, the lights for any sign shall be so maintained at a significantly low levels of intensity and brightness, that it shall not adversely affect the neighboring premises or safe vision of operators of the vehicles moving on the public ways. It is in the public ways, it does, it is a bright light, so it does, people have complained. And I think, you know, it's, you could find a way to tone it down.
That's certainly something that we can have a discussion with the building inspector and look at that.
I can, I can deal with the building inspector, bring my electrician, we can work it out with reducing some lumens in it.
Yes, definitely. That need to be done.
Right, it's not that bright, I think when...
It is bright.
Is it?
It is bright.
If people are complaining, we wouldn't bring it up if people weren't complaining about it.
If you live across the street, I mean, it's different than driving by, right? Again, I mean, it's, you can't tell if it's, if you can't say to someone it's not bright if they're living right there.
There, there are ways to help with that, so we should, we should take a look at that.
What I do is, it's not Las Vegas.
Yeah.
It's not Las Vegas, it's Miss Poitiers, and it's a single family residence. You do need to respect the single family residents over there.
What I do is, I work with Bentley and my electrician and get some lumens which is more acceptable, that can be...
Or even maybe on a timer to dim it down at nighttime, right? Rather than certain, at a certain time?
It should be dimmed down all the time, it's not an...
It has to be legible. He thinks it's to be legible.
Right, but at nighttime, it's dark, it's brighter when it's darker.
It's not a business, it's a, it's an apartment complex.
But, but there is...
So people go in, gets out of the apartment complex, most, most probably the residence, and how much brightness you want to have.
There is a concern, a safety concern with people not being able to recognize where it is...
Right.
Throwing on their brakes and making a last second turn. So we, we do wanna make sure that it's easily viewable, but we also don't want to run into the issue where it's...
I totally agree, I agree, but there is a limit, right?
And that's why I'm suggesting that we should meet with the building inspector and try to figure out how to get to there.
Okay.
Okay, the building inspector's here, I get a que- I have a question for him, okay? Do you know, I don't know if you know the answer tonight, but I'll ask you anyways, is there a way on these luminous lights that they can be, you know, dimmed, you know, there could be a timer on it where it could be dimmed, you know, less bright? Like, I mean, like from eight o'clock at night until maybe ten o'clock or eleven o'clock at night, it could be a little bit brighter, but then, you know, after everybody goes to bed at eleven o'clock, ten o'clock, whatever, maybe tone it down until, I mean, do you know if there's, if that's a possibility?
I don't know if that's a possibility for this, but I've just been presented the town bylaws on signs this evening, and what the town bylaw says, signs shall not be illuminated directly or indirectly between the hours of 12:00 AM and 6:00 AM unless the business establishment is open to the public during those hours.
Okay, but we're talking about a business, so are we gonna, are we gonna consider an apartment complex a business?
No. It's a, how do you consider an apartment complex a business?
Well, because I'm just reading what, I'm just looking, he says...
I mean, silent, the, the sounds of that is certainly, it makes sense to say if a business isn't open, you shouldn't have it illuminated, but because this is an apartment complex, you know, residents could be coming in and out at any hour.
All right, so what I would recommend is what Mr. Habity just said, and Mr. Ali said, is to contact the building inspector and have him work with you, go out there with your electrician. I would suggest that the best time is to do it at night, you know?
Just put a timer, you're saying?
You know?
No, I would suggest, you know...
You wanna look at the brightness and the lumens to make sure that it's not excessive.
Do it at nighttime, you know, I understand that, you know, it might be a little inconvenient, but hey, you know, it's better than all these complaints that we're gonna be, that we're getting, you know?
No, not only the complaints, you know, if there is an accident, yeah.
Well, that too.
So the lights are very bright, and our by law specifically prohibits those kind of lights.
I'm gonna tell you right now, I don't know nothing about illumination, okay? I don't know what the decimal it should be or anything, so we need to have an expert come in and tell us. And I think that the best time to do this is at like eleven o'clock at night, you know, when it's totally dark out, people have gone to bed, you know, go out there and actually see how bright the light, how bright the lights are, and to see if they can be dimmed, you know, to the point where, like Raj said, you know, if these cars are coming down, it's not gonna, you know, hit them in the face and, you know, they're gonna, especially if it's at night and, you know, if there's fog or anything, you know?
The solution could be as simple as a lower wattage bulb.
That, that too, I don't know, but you said...
So I, I would suggest, you know, tone it all, at all the time, you know? That's a busy road too. People are coming from Mount Pochesas at all the times, during summer times, snow, snowboarding after snowboarding, people coming through that road, and if you have a bright sign, all of a sudden, there is no light, there is, council, if you go, if you drive by that road, you will notice that. It's like a, it's like entering to a mall.
I'm, I'm hoping to be...
We are not, we are not entering to a mall, it's an, it's an apartment complex.
I'm hoping to be done here tonight before it's that dark.
Yes. It's a, it's a apartment complex, it is bright, and my, I suggest, you know, it has to be toned it down, at all the time, not twelve o'clock. Twelve o'clock also people can come in, and 190, when they come in, all of a sudden, you have a hit with a big bright sign.
So we'll work with the building inspector to, to look into that issue and find an appropriate wattage.
And the building inspector, as usual, when you have an answer, make, please make sure that we know what's going on, so that in case people come and ask us a question. Okay, Mr. Habity, I'm not, I'm not sure if you...
Chairman, do you want to address on the fence?
Yes, that's what I'm gonna talk, okay? We had VHB go out and do an assessment of things that we felt needed to be completed, that hadn't been completed yet. And they sent us a list and everything. We discussed this, we were gonna ask Mr. Ali for a bond, we decided it wasn't bond. But the things that were on the list, you know, Mr. Ali said that, you know, we suggested to him that as he finished, you know, when it was all done, that he contacted the building inspector, let the building inspector know that these things were done, so he could go out and inspect it. Once he came back and told us that, you know, he felt comfortable that these, these were taken care of, then we'd have VHB go out and make sure that, you know, everything is all right. One of the things is the, the stockade fence, as you come up the, up the roadway, the stockade fence that separates the road from the, the house, okay? My issue with the fence is, and it's not, it was not approved on the plan, the fence was approved on the plan as one continuous fence. Unfortunately, there's two openings on the fence, one is for the walkway, one is for the driveway, okay? So my suggestion is, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but my suggestion is, is that one or two things needs to happen. Either the fence has to be completely fenced, or if he wants, if Mr. Ali wants to keep the two openings, he needs to, he needs to put a gate on them, okay?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The fence, the stockade fence.
To put a gate.
Okay, on the driveway and on the, and on the side, on the...
Either a continuous fence or a gate.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry. So that, that's, and I know that there's, you know, there were some other things, um...
Is putting a gate there a problem?
Giving, putting a gate, there is not a problem. The reason why I left it open, it was the after thing, because in the original plan, in the site plan, what was drawn up originally, there is a garage there, because we don't have any maintenance garage for all these apartments. Because I own that house also, I'm going to put a maintenance garage there so we can store all our equipment, which we use it for plowing and other stuff, everything into that place, so that anything has to be fixed, any, any extra material which is, will be not allowable in the apartments to put it over there. Eventually, when I have money, I'm going to build a garage there, where it can fit all my equipment into a, a place, not in the apartment place, or down the parking lot, you know? That was the reason I left it.
So they put, so they put a gate there, won't be a problem, you can get in and out?
It's a very good access for people living there also. There are two roads now, instead of coming through a skinny driveway, they can go out on a wider road. Traffic is not that much, there's no problem there. I do understand board has an issue with it, because both the properties is owned by me. If board wants me to put a gate, it doesn't matter, I'll put a gate.
Let's do that.
Let the board pick what's...
Okay, now, on this list, how much of this list is complete? Mr. Habity?
I have not seen that list.
Okay.
You give the gate?
Gate is the new one, new thing started.
Before we move on? What's that? Go ahead. You know, he said, he asked you about the gate, or the, he would put the gate in. Okay, that's fine.
But I need your approval.
That's...
Okay, again, I don't want...
Well, we'll submit plans that show it.
Plans are there already.
But it doesn't show a gate.
Right, yeah.
So we'll submit a plan that shows a gate, and the board can just simply...
On the walkway also, you want me to close it?
If you wanna put a gate, a gate should be there too, so that...
On the walkway.
On the walkway too, so that people can come in and out, you know, it's not just a free... Okay, on this list, and I know you have a copy of it, the building inspector has a copy, we have a copy, I want, I'd like to know how much of this list is completed.
On the VHB list, everything is done except the planting... On the VHB list, everything is done except the plantings.
Okay. And what are we gonna do about the plantings?
I don't have room there. If the board can show it to me, I couldn't get any place where I can grow some more thing. So, I have put irrigation system now. It started up today again, so hopefully I'll have some good grass and some plants what I have put in to grow.
Building inspector, any comment on the plantings? Do you see any issues? Why?
Plantings, no.
So, does it need to be there? I mean, the soil is just not... The soil is just not...
Yeah, the elevations are such that you couldn't plant things on it. There's too steep inclines in a lot of areas that originally showed plantings.
So, is this real? No, this is a planting. Oh. Yeah. We're talking basically in front of the buildings.
Front of the buildings, some of them, the VHB administered because they were very small plants, they cannot see it. In a year or two, they can see it. When they went down there, there was some snow there.
Were these plantings originally in any way intended for screening purposes?
No.
No.
No. All the screening was done before. All the screening plantings are done. This is only for the buildings.
Okay.
I know there's some people here from Stillwater. Any complaints with the plantings as far as, you know, blocking your view?
They aren't tall enough to block anything yet.
They're not tall enough, but they look okay? I mean, from what you can see?
They're located.
Okay. All right.
It was done as per the plan. I had made couple of labors also talk to them.
Okay, and you're gonna fix the chain link fence on the detention pond?
Yeah, both things.
The one where the fence, the...
Gate and fence, I can take care of the same.
Okay, all right. How much work... How much is left to do on the play areas?
It's all done.
It's all done? Hundred percent? Okay. All right. So, building inspector, as far as I can see and from what Ms. Ali's saying that, you know, pretty much everything is done.
Chairman, do you want to go through one by one quickly?
Okay, so we had manhole shape inverts, 12-inch hood.
Yes.
The removal of drainage structure sediment. I myself and the building inspector were out there yesterday and we saw that that's been done. The chain link fence in the back, that's been put up. The stockade fence, we already talked about it. And then the plant, the trees and stuff, okay? The reflectorized white line is painted. The construction of the storm berm at the detention ponds, I've seen, we've seen those. And now the play areas, the swings and the slides. So, Bentley, if you could go out Monday and just verify all of this and then send us a note saying it and, okay. Now, and Mr. Haverty's gonna correct me if I'm wrong here, but normally at the end of a project, there's a final as-built, okay? Which shows the detention ponds, everything that was, you know, on the original plan, okay? Does that still hold true on a 40B project?
It can. I have not reviewed the comprehensive permit decision to see if there was a specific condition of acquiring it. When I draft a comprehensive decision for a board, I always include a requirement for an as-built plan.
Okay.
Again, I would have to review the decision.
All right. I'm pretty sure it's there. At least I was under... I was under the impression that that's what we discussed, you know, that there would be an as-built at the end.
That is an as-built. Okay.
So, let's... Once the building inspector tells us the board that it's all done, then we would require Ms. Ali to do the final as-built, submit it to us so that we can submit it to...
The board?
To VHB for their review so that they can come out and review it and tell us that everything is up to snuff the way it's supposed to be on the plan. I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm not a really big fan of 40B, okay? I understand the purpose of it and, you know, as long as a town or municipality is under the 10%, you know, it's basically, you know, a hit parade, I guess you could say. It's driven by two numbers. It's driven by the numerator, which is the number of affordable units that are in the municipality, and the denominator is the census, okay? And right now, the census is from 2010. Now, right now, RSHI is at 8.1%, so we're getting close to the 10%. My concern is that when 2020 comes, you know, things could change. That number could either go up or could go down, Mr. Haverty.
It will only go up.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it'll only go down. The gap will only go up.
Okay.
Because... Because you're... Because the way that it works is you count the affordable units as soon as they're created.
Right.
As soon as a comprehensive permit is issued, you get to add those affordable units. However, the total number of those units don't get added to your denominator until the, you know, the census comes out every 10 years.
Right, right, right.
Which is one of the few ways in which the towns are actually throwing a little bit of a bone through this process.
And then, basically, if we have... If at the 2020 census, if it comes out in some by miraculous decision or whatever, we're at 10%, we're safe for the next 10 years, you know? But, you know, basically what happens is, is that the board can say, if a developer comes in with a 40B project, we have the right to say no. And, you know, that's the end of it. Right now, as long as we're under the 10%, you know, we have to try to work with the developer as much as, you know, I don't think there's... And municipality in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that loves 40B projects. Maybe some, I don't know.
Cambridge.
Cambridge, okay.
Cambridge is the one municipality that's well over 10% that uses chapter 40B quite frequently.
Well, that must be Harvard. I can understand, because they own probably three quarters of Cambridge.
Chairman, before we sidetrack, did we receive the bond?
No, there was no bond.
No bond?
No bond.
No monetary?
No.
What was the bond you were talking about at last meeting?
We were gonna talk about a bond for the $75,000, but it came down to the point where, you know, there wasn't much left to do.
All the work was done.
All the work was done and it just mattered being approved and stuff. And once the building inspector goes out and says, you know, everything's done, Ms. Ali submits the final as-built, we send that off to VHB.
The VHB agrees for no bond? Or you are saying no bond?
We say no bond.
But VHB did recommend some bond.
They did.
But we, the board, voted no.
And Mr. Chairman, the town is protected by the fact that occupancy permits will...
Oh, I understand that. I understand. I understand that. I understand that.
So, the board approved the last meeting?
Yeah. Right? Was it the last meeting?
Before last, I think.
Yeah, maybe two ago.
Yeah.
It was the only board we are meeting you left.
Yeah.
You were not here.
You were not here.
It was that hit list that he read off.
Yeah, the hit list.
It's essentially all the done, yes.
Okay, anybody else? Charlie, anything?
No.
No.
Charlie's tired.
Nate?
No.
Raj?
I think you know. We did talk about the light on the entrance that need to be fixed. Gate fence need to be fixed. Those two are the things that...
Yeah. Okay, so, Mr. Haverty, what exactly do you need from us now?
We need you to take a vote to make the determination that our requested modification is insubstantial.
Okay.
Once you have made that vote, it's automatically approved.
My understanding is simple majority, right?
That's correct.
Yes, simple majority. It's not that supermajority, which hit me pretty hard the first time. But anyways, okay, so...
I gotta get a vote sheet from downstairs?
Okay, yes, please.
Do you want me to get that?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and get that now? We'll just take a two-minute pause here while you get that.
Since your chairman, since you're closing down, you want us any from the public?
Anybody have anything from the public? All right, let's start with this... Let's wait till she comes back, because we want to get your name and make sure that it's on the record and stuff. So, let's just hold off. We'll know that you want to talk, so we'll get to you. Do you need us to send you a letter or anything or just take a vote?
You should send a letter. Technically, you haven't acted within your timeframe until you've given us notification and writing.
Because I think we have till, what, June 6th? That's the 20-day period? Yeah.
A old sheet should be working as well.
Yeah, because it's 20 days from the day that the town clerk received it, right? Okay, so that's...
Yeah, I think a copy of the vote sheet is fine.
Okay, all right.
Because they had accepted it before.
All right, so she'll get the vote sheet, we'll do it tonight, make a copy of it, give you a copy of it. So, you should be all set, okay?
Yeah, it doesn't need to be any more formal than that.
Would one of you gentlemen want to make the motion?
Did you want to bring it to the...
Yeah, I'm gonna talk to them first. Okay, all right. Let me know when you're ready, Toby.
All righty.
Okay. Yes, sir? Date, your name and address, please?
Sure. John Owen, I see you in Stillwater Heights. I've listened to the discussion and I know there's a distinction between an insubstantial change and a substantial change. My only comment would be the... One of the primary, the original objections to this project was its density. And now, although it's considered, quote, "an insubstantial change," it's yet another movement to make the project denser. Although the footprint of building C doesn't change, certainly the density of building C changes. By my math, it's a 6% increase in the total number of bedrooms. And we're just kind of incrementally making the project more dense. And I guess the question I will leave you with is, is there anything to prevent in the future a request to convert some number of two-bedroom apartments to three-bedroom? I mean, is... Could this... Is there any limit to how much more dense this could be made? It would have been nicer to hear a request that it converted some number of two-bedroom apartments to one bedroom, but I know that's not on the agenda. So, technically, it's probably an insubstantial change, but it's just another incremental step to take an already very dense development in a kind of a rural area and make it slightly more dense. So, that's all I have to say.
Can you answer that question?
I can, Mr. Chairman. So, again, with regards to the determination as to whether it's substantial or insubstantial, 15 would be the number that you could change to stay under the 10% total. We're making a change of nine, so theoretically, there would be six more bedrooms that could potentially be added and still stay under that 10%. But they're... We're not really in a conceptual state now. These units have been constructed. So, the chances of the applicant coming back to you and seeking that sort of a change are extremely slim.
And that would have... And if, like, say, two years from now, he decided that he wanted to take, you know, some of the two bedrooms in unit, say, building C, uh, building B, which is all two bedrooms, and he wanted to convert some of them to three bedrooms?
It would require another modification. They might only be able to change six total.
Okay.
And it would require construction of units already built and it just seems very...
So, basically, that's not gonna happen.
It's, yeah.
So, the density of what it is now, whatever, however we vote, that's where it's gonna stay for the project?
Yes.
Okay. The building inspector, go ahead, buddy.
Mr. Fire Chief, Building Commissioner, Mr. Haverty said that the plans sometimes do change after you guys look at them. However, my issue is, I approved set of plans, stamped them, gave them to Mr. Ali, and that's not the set he used. So, it changes made from my set of plans. My set of plans don't show rooms with dens or a room that could be a den. So, there was a modification made. It's your call what to do with it. I at least, myself and the fire chief, need a revised set of plans to show these, the changes for our records, because we're not built as per approval.
That's a fair request, Mr. Chairman.
And is that... That's par for the course because it's a 40B project?
Yes.
Okay. So, will you be able to provide the building inspector and the fire chief and the board with a final copy of the plan?
Yes.
Okay.
I do have a comment.
We did key plan work.
No. I need a complete set, the whole set, the working plan.
I don't know what you're talking about. I think, you know, after listening from a building inspector, I do feel this den was created with an idea to make it to two-bedroom, number one. Number two, it does... The comments from them, you know, it does increases density, it does increases the population over there, it does affects our schools, two-bedroom apartment, and it does affects the traffic. So, it does... Not only that you are changing the number of rooms, but in total, you know, you are altering so many things over there. So, I just want to add on to that before the board makes addition.
And Mr. Chairman, my response to that would be, anytime you're increasing the number of bedrooms by 10%, there are going to be incremental impacts. These aren't really substantial, though.
Ms. Ali, if I can ask the question, what is the occupancy rate? What percentage do you have?
Market rate, we have 100%. And affordable, we have one unit left and five application waiting to get approved.
So, out of the 20 affordables, 19 of them were rented?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And out of those...
The last one is also rented, but I'm not sure. I didn't get the confirmation.
Those nine... Out of those 19, 14 of them, I believe, were local preference. Did we have anybody from local preference?
Just one.
Just one?
Just one.
Okay.
Again, you know, the one other thing I do like to add on is, you know, when the board approved the comprehensive permit, they did a... when the board approved the comprehensive permit, they did put up 14 single fam, single bedroom for a reason. For the, in our area, people can rent it, people can afford it. So now, you are taking away all the affordability for the, any, any of the best boys and people here. So you are leaving it only one bedroom, one, one single-family home there. Single-bedroom apartment over there.
It's like a $50 difference.
For one bedroom, $50?
But ultimately, Mr. Chairman, the issues of affordability are, again, within the exclusive jurisdiction of the subsidizing agency.
Right.
And they will review this.
There's a lot of demand for one-bedroom and two-bedroom.
They are fully aware...
Is that, that's, that's the thing now? There's not that much demand for one-bedrooms?
Two-bedrooms.
Oh, two-bedrooms. The two-bedroom is in more demand?
One-bedroom gets rented. We have six people waiting for one-bedroom occupancy. In all of my 200 apartments I have, all the one-bedroom and two-bedroom differences is no more than $50 to $75.
Okay.
But people prefer one-bedroom. What happens there? Layout is same, but you have bigger rooms. When you are building apartments, we build blocks.
Okay. Anything else from anybody? Okay. One of you gentlemen want to make the motion? I gave you the vote sheet, right?
Yes, thank you. Motion to determine that the proposed modifications of converting nine one-bedroom apartments to nine two-bedroom apartments.
In building C.
In building C is, is an insubstantial change.
So, all right, you have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I do like to understand, the S, what will be, insubstantial? And the no, what will be substantial, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Hearing no other discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
As much as this pains me, aye. All not in favor, say aye.
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 So the vote is three, three to two, not to approve it. So now, I guess it's gonna go to, to MHP?
It's gonna go to Housing Appeals Committee.
Okay. Okay, anybody have anything else for Mr. Haverty, Mr. Ali, or the building inspector, while they're here? No.
No.
Nothing, okay. All right, well, thank you, gentlemen. Soon as we sign the vote sheet, we'll make a copy of it and give it to you. Okay? Here's your plan back, and you'll make sure that we get a revised copy. Does any miscellaneous paperwork or anything that we need, that needs our signature, Toby?
Uh, no, I think I gave everybody what we had, and then I gave you those couple of pieces of mail, but...
Do we have any, anybody submit any special permit requests or anything?
Nothing yet.
What's the deadline for the June 21st meeting?
Oh, yes.
So the 7th and the 14th would have to be in the paper, right?
Uh, the 7th, 14th, yeah, so I think next Monday is like the deadline.
This coming Monday?
Uh, yeah.
So the 4th?
I think so. I have it written down, but I think so.
All right. Anybody have anything that they want to bring up? Anything? Nothing?
No.
Okay, the next scheduled ZBA meeting is Thursday?
What about the other one? What, Tajin?
What are we gonna do about Dr. Tajin, since you're here?
I've notified the court that he hasn't paid his fine or appealed it, so just in their hands.
Okay, so he has not paid his fine, and he has not appealed it?
No.
Okay, but you haven't heard anything back from the court?
No.
Okay. Could you please make sure that, that we, as soon as you know that when they're gonna go, if they, if, what the action, the court's gonna take, could you make sure that we, we're notified, so that we know? Okay. Let me see, before you run off, let me, I'm just looking at other things. 24 Sterling Place, is that the one that's behind the, behind the businesses? Is that the one that he wants to tear the house down and build four units?
No.
Okay, what's, what's 24 Sterling Place?
It's a building that he's done a great deal of work to. I'm not sure, I believe it was possibly a three-family, and he's converting, he has converted it to a four-family without any permits.
So anything more than a three-family has to go to the planning board, right?
It depends what district we're talking about.
Well, that's, is that single, is that single residency?
Copy of, uh...
Single resident?
Of the what?
Of the...
Oh, the vote. I don't think they've signed it on yet.
I'm the last one.
Make a copy.
Okay.
Just give us the original back, please.
Thank you.
Okay, what does it say? Sorry. So this comes from a, so it's a three-family now?
It's actually, it's a four-family now.
It was a three-family?
From what I can tell, yeah.
Okay, what, what's its zone?
I believe, it doesn't say on the paperwork. But I believe it's a star zone anyway.
It's what, single residency?
Yes.
Okay.
So he's not even allowed to have that.
Okay, all right, we'll have to bring this up.
So this is a letter that, that you recently sent?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
With a stop work order, that we just stopped working on it.
Okay, and he's told them that he needs...
See how he responds.
Right, okay. All right, like I said, our next scheduled meeting is Thursday, June 21st, 2018. And it'll depend on, on what, how much business we have to conduct.
An extra copy?
Yeah. To Thursday.
And next week is a special meeting?
And then next week, there's a special meeting. There's two, two executive session meetings, okay? So we need everybody, do you hear me, Charlie?
No.
Okay, so we need everybody here. The first one starts at 5:30.
So the sixth?
That's Wednesday.
Yes.
The 6th, at 5:30. And then there'll be one right after that. Okay? Anything else?
Has that agenda been posted? Or if not, it needs to be...
No, Toby's gonna do, Toby's gonna do it. Toby, the agenda for the, for the, the meeting that we're having next Wednesday, we have to get that in by Monday, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we can work that night on Sunday?
On Sunday.
Okay, all right, anybody have anything else? Okay, motion to...
We have an agenda item to next month, next week, sir?
Yeah, Toby?
That's after election, right?
Yeah.
So are we doing the reorganization on that day, or after that?
No. Not even worry about that, right now. Let's get these two executive sessions taken care of first.
Okay.
All right, so motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.